We're good?
We're good.
Or Michael?
Well, I don't know if you're good, but the machine's on.
So if you go to five dash two.
February fourth, twenty twenty.
Item B.
So what, um, okay.
So five dash.
There was a question on the top, wasn't it? Did that register anywhere, authority you were asking about?
It was author, the one I looked at.
Author, right. So that's okay.
So, so we can, we can resolve this and get that note out of the slide there?
That's good. I just resolved it. That was my, my next one. So we're on?
Of course.
Five oh one B? Or five dash one B? Is that what you said?
That's not what I was saying.
The comment, five dash two B.
Five dash two B?
Right, okay.
There are comments there. That's, which would indicate that we've got to put at the end of that sentence, the last sentence, a bracket, amended by, amended on, and then the date, by local law, and then the local law number, end bracket. And I say that because I can see that there are changes that are being proposed. And actually, I know that there have been changes that have been made and accepted to item number B.
Um, I know that we had talked about deleting to be named in the brackets, and your comment was that it was agreed.
And I still have that here. That's been resolved.
To be deleted, right, yeah. Um, so, so the, the, um.
And authorized by the state of New York.
Yeah. CCA Administrator shall mean an entity. And do we leave in to be named? Do we take out to be named?
Entity was a change. Okay, so I know that was a change. It was never in the original document. So that's a, a.
A change that needs to be.
It needs to be remembered that it's a change, so that this paragraph can be identified as.
But who changed that? We didn't change that?
We did. It used to say, it used to say jewel.
Yes, we did, we added it.
We changed entity.
It used to say jewel in the beginning.
No, it, no, it used to say to be named.
So was that the first meeting then?
What was the question?
Yeah, it might have been.
I don't know when, what you're saying, it's not that it was, it was.
It's three weeks ago.
It was, there was a change, but you don't see it, but I don't remember doing that last meeting. So was it the first meeting we did?
Yes, probably on January fifteen.
So, so do we need to, like, when we make changes like this, should we put a bracket that just says LL or something, so that we'll remember that?
It'll become incredibly confusing. However.
So fix it now?
My solution to that is a red line.
Right.
And the red line will show all of the changes, all of the additions, all of the modifications, and all of the deletions. So that when we're close to the end, we can go back and put in the amended by or added by, and then the date and the local law. And that, that is a convention for codes.
Right. Um.
So you'll do that throughout everything? Or we need to do that?
Uh, well, I would recommend we don't do it now, but we do it toward the end, when all of the changes.
Right, but do we make a note of it now with the?
What I, what I said was, in my mind, the easiest way to do that is to keep a mirror redlined version, which shows everything that's been added, modified with the label.
So in your mind, the easiest way to do that would be, now, I'm back, I'm looking at a version on January twenty ninth at seven eleven, where you can see that adjustment. Now, if I restored that version.
Once we'll have to have stored the version where the entity was, the word entity was.
Right, that's, this is, that's the same version.
The word entity was added in that version?
That's the same version. Yeah, you can see it as highlighted. Um, so, you know, the question is, I tried to do what I think Stephanie had recommended, is take the original document, which is the document I took out of the local site, and say, one of our current documents, and do a word compare. And I wasn't, I wasn't getting what, and I'm not quite sure how to do a word compare.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've learned how to use Word, and I've done that with this version and the version that we started with.
Did it help? Did it work?
It did work.
Okay.
There, however, there are some, um, there are some formatting change, things that are not showing up correctly. But I believe that that can be addressed later.
So if we finish doing what we're doing, and then we take the final version that we have all suggested versus the version that we started, well, in, in, I guess, when you, when the Code of Day Committee finished and you do a word compare, will you get what you need?
Well, what, there's what the code, yes. Simple answer is yes.
It's, it's gonna be messy, but.
It's gonna be messy, but yes.
So to be named should be in red also then?
No, to be named should be deleted.
Should be deleted. So if we, if we resolve this, um, comment that says delete to be named, we're good?
And then it'll just say duly authorized this.
Hi.
Hello.
Can we join this room?
You can listen.
You can find the seat somewhere.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Why you would want to?
There might be seats in the side room.
We'll just turn.
There's one chair here.
We'll bring a chair. Thanks.
So if we just resolve this to be named, it will disappear, but eventually you will see.
I already cap, I've already captured it.
Okay, so we can resolve this.
To be named.
It's to be deleted. Okay, good.
Now, by the state of New York, is that, how come when I, sorry, I don't know which way to go. How come when I, I resolved to, oh, okay, I know what I did. When I made that comment about to be named, I didn't actually delete it, I just made a comment.
Yeah.
So what we need to do is actually delete it. Okay. So by the state of New York, um, you added that, is that something that needs to be added?
I, I, I don't think it is, but that's my, it's totally up to you guys what you wanna do.
Okay, so we're on.
I think we can just add it. It's not gonna kill or hurt anything.
I think, you know, it's duly authorized, it has to be authorized by somebody.
Yep. Well, they are the body in question.
Right, yeah, but if you, if you don't put it in, then it leaves it hanging as to who's authorizing it. So, um.
So accept that suggestion.
Yeah.
Authorized, recognized.
Right, so we're gonna accept it to the state of New York.
Yep.
Um, we're on the CCA code, um, chapter oh five, chapter five in the, it's on the CCA, and this is, this is tedious.
Yes, it is.
Sentence by sentence, paragraph by paragraph.
Okay, we're just trying to follow along.
So next is see definition below.
Yeah, Marie said that should not be definitions.
These are the definitions, and they, they are cumulative.
Well, I have a question, just in general with most of these chapters. I always assume definition should be like at the top. And they're not. They're sort of like.
Depending upon whether or not there's an article in the chapter, where there are chapters that have articles in them, there are some articles that have a set of definitions that are in addition to the definitions that were in previous articles.
Okay, so in this particular, um, chapter, the definitions don't start at the top. The definition is five point, five dash two.
Yeah, which is fine.
But, um, okay, so then, uh, I can, we can take out see definition below?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna X that out. Okay. All right, next one. Sometimes I just did formatting, okay. Just because those things drove me crazy. Uh.
Five oh two G.
Okay, just because my, um. Does, do we wanna say shall mean? Sometimes we say shall mean, sometimes we say means.
I, I think it's consistent. Your addition of shall is, makes it consistent with all of the others. So I would accept, I think it's a good recommendation.
Cord drop.
Two points.
I think next is just, just found its way there.
Um.
We just have to.
Five dash two?
Yeah, that's just formatting. It's taken, the, the heading just got out, so that's just deleting that.
Yeah.
As it turns out, in, in some of the accepted versions, the heading doesn't fall in the middle.
Yeah, okay, so.
But it's fine to take it out.
Um, hopefully, you know, I mean, when you finish all this, that, that becomes a, a heading.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, where E code comes in.
That's where E code's problem.
Yeah.
Okay, um, five dash four, I changed that to who only because we.
Which is makes it grammatically correct.
Really, okay. So that would be it's delete that and accept who. Five dash four, the next one is just a heading thing, which gets deleted. Uh, okay. Five dash four C.
No more.
CCA Administrator on behalf of the Village of Cold Spring shall issue one or more requests for proposal to suppliers. I'm not comfortable with one or more. To me, it, it should always be at least more than one. Um, now, maybe I'm reading it wrong.
But, but you always issue a request for proposal. It's, it's the.
Okay, I know, now that I'm looking at it, yeah, it's the responses that we have.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
That's good. Reject.
Reject, yeah.
Or whatever. Resolve.
So I'm just gonna delete it.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the RFP, that's one, and it's the responses that are more than one?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, and if I look at it enough, it makes sense.
Next one's that to who, which is the same.
That to who. Okay. Um, okay, this was the definition thing, um.
I think we should just throw it up there. It's not gonna kill anything, and we have, we have definitions for everything else in there.
But we don't have addition, a definition for APP.
But this isn't a definition. Yeah, it's just a.
What I would recommend is that just putting, putting in whatever it is, I forget what.
Assistance program.
Participants, participants.
If we're gonna refer to it later in the document as APP, we don't.
We don't. We don't. It's the only time it's mentioned.
So then just change it to assistance program participant.
And, and don't capitalize, it's just lowercase.
Okay, shall I, I'm gonna do that. So it would be assistance, program, participant.
Is that singular or plural?
Uh, just going, including energy usage data, assistance program.
I think he, I think his response, which I forwarded to everybody, was plural.
Participant status. Okay. Will he provide?
What's that?
Are you making?
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of, were you looking at something? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
He's just driving his fancy.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Okay, um.
Good.
The next one, um, it's just formatting, which I took. Okay, then we're back to something that we had discussed earlier. Five dash eight A, annual reports shall be filed.
With the Board of Trustees by March thirty first.
Right.
And, um, what they said is they expect that they'll get them to us by March fifteenth.
Right, and I wanted to include who's filing annual reports.
I think that was the question.
Shall be filed by our CCA?
Not our CCA.
By?
Our rep.
By the, the CCA.
The CCA. Or is it?
Why do we have to do it by March thirty first?
That's the way the contract said, I guess.
So why are they cutting it so close, I wonder?
They're saying they're gonna give it to us by March fifteenth, when the contract says March thirty first.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So it's their contract.
Shall be filed with, by.
By.
By the CCA.
Uh, right, CCA, with the Village of Cold Spring, okay, and that takes care of all of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What was that? That's just trustees, okay.
Yeah, it's like a question.
Right, one apostrophe.
So now, once we, like, this looks like this is done. Can we come back and look at this again, or we, I mean, at the end, I know we will. But as of now, can we say five is done?
Well, you had said five was done on January fifteen.
I don't, yes.
Yeah, that was really done. It is.
So five is really done.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's go to the mark.
No, no, five is done.
Sorry.
You weren't, you weren't here when we went through the list. Michael has the whole list of what we're doing tonight.
Now, what's the other one?
I saw it.
Now, if you could, take a look at the folder. Are you seeing five versions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know which one.
Does it?
Was just modified.
Oh, okay, the last one, the newest?
I have no idea. Who, what change was, what change was accepted?
The last change was.
To disappear.
Which was, which one was Google, Google accepted?
It wasn't just that.
It's a space.
I deleted the, um.
Highlighted.
And I thought I saw something too.
Yeah.
Trying to see if there's anything in here. I'll tell you in a second, Marie. Oh, it's, all right, to be named is still there in the one I'm looking at, so that's my right. Seriously.
Okay, I'm looking at the last one, the one furthest to the right, and to be named is gone.
Okay, so can we?
So that's one check.
Can we get rid of everything else?
Get rid of the first one?
Um, so you're looking at them as, I'm looking at them in a list.
I'm looking at the left, from the left.
One thirteen twenty.
Okay, so you're looking at them as, uh, pictures.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the file here.
Oh, I see. So you're looking at the last, the one that you.
I didn't touch anything. I didn't accept anything.
We just had that one, that's good. I don't, I don't know what this one, this one probably has one.
They all have the same date on them.
This one.
Yeah, that's the previous.
Yeah.
So the.
All right, I'm still looking at the one.
The fifth one is the newest one, when you look at it.
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah.
We just looked.
All right, so we get rid of.
Well, not, yeah, the fifth one, yep.
Yeah, because the one before that has, doesn't have the change.
Okay, Fran, you're getting rid of all of them?
I'm not getting, no, I'm not getting rid of anything, I'm still.
Okay, I, I'm gonna then delete.
Maybe we could title it finished or something. You don't wanna start changing titles either.
I wish there was a way we could mark.
We can accept it as a version, right? There's a way to do that, which.
There's no way to, to read these with, with time, right?
Okay, I think I've got.
If you put it in list, you can see which one was, you can see the time.
I've got, I've deleted all of them except the last.
All right, so let me reopen.
Make sure that, that you're.
That's weird, because it still shows, all of them still show up a lot.
They're just off the screen now, maybe.
Reopen it.
Okay.
Yeah, reopen it again, and then you'll, okay. So this is, do we need a search?
That's good.
Do we wanna separate the folder to put the ones that we've completed?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
We wanna folder that we.
Say if my limited vocabulary.
Um, I opened the folder, and there's nothing in it, because I was playing with stuff, but, so there's a folder named Fran, only because I ran out of thoughts of what to name things, so Fran sounded logical. Do we wanna move stuff to there, or just re, I can rename that folder.
Right.
Do not remain, not, don't rename the folder?
No, your folder, the one that's named Fran. No, I wouldn't touch yours.
On the screen there.
Um.
Rename the folder.
Can you rename anything?
Finished in quotes. It's slowly disappearing.
Slowly disappear, yeah.
Yeah, hers is done, yours is.
I'm going to get them changed.
Every time you do that, it updates and it takes more.
Yeah, yeah, there, there you go.
Yeah, makes perfect sense, though.
Okay, so we're on five nine?
I think Fran is still, um, working, establishing it.
I'm not sure I can even get this.
If you're on Google Docs, if you hit file, then you can go down, and you can save or copy, you can save, or you can also save it as a PDF or a Word.
I just wanna save it in another folder, another, another something.
We'll decide if we wanna drop that hole. Whereas section.
Which one are we looking at now?
People looking at.
Nine.
Oh.
Save to a folder, didn't say that.
So we can, we can just resolve that top one, Marie, right? Should do that?
Yeah, I think that should.
We need to discuss that. It's not supposed to be there.
Right.
Yeah, it's not part of the code.
Do I wanna move it, or do we just wanna copy it to the other folder?
Wha, wha, what are you talking about now? Five?
The Fenway Union.
Um.
I'll copy it.
All right, is there a way to copy? Let me go ahead.
Is everybody okay if I delete the resolution from the top of nine?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, make a copy. I hope the copy is going into.
And I think we can all agree, Marie, I think you should do those others too, all the section ones?
Yes, okay, I'll, I'll take care of that after we're finished tonight.
Okay.
Because, as Fran pointed out, as I was doing that on Sunday night, I was getting confused as to what the section number was.
All right. So, yeah, everything was, okay, so that copy is there, okay.
If that's okay with everybody, I'll do it offline.
Yeah, yeah. So now I'm back to, we, we did ask Alcys today to give us some faster service in here, just.
Yeah, we need that throughout the building, too.
Because it's pathetic, yeah. Well, you figure, what, what we have is what they gave us ten years ago.
Right.
What we're asking for now is gonna be good for about a year and a half, and then the rest is. Okay, so I have copied five, okay. So that's.
So there's two things, um, that I made, that are reflected in a bunch of comments on Sunday. One is the format of a chapter is a chapter number, which in this case is nine, and then each section is chapter number dot section number, and then name of the section.
Okay.
So I will make those changes from section, and then section number to nine, uh, dash two, or nine dash three. And if you take a look at, at section two definitions, the convention for definitions is that the, the term that's being defined is in all caps, no quotes.
Okay, so it has to be.
Okay, so i- if everybody's in agreement, I'll go through, I, I think I've commented on all of them in the definitions. There are not that many, um, and I'll change those to the correct, uh, the correct convention.
Um, that is, now, if they're in all caps without quotes, that's just in the definition section, but not throughout the document, right?
Right, throughout the document. Anytime there is a definition, in a definition section, anytime that word occurs in that, in that chapter, the first letter of the word is to be capitalized.
Gotcha.
Okay, it's, it's a convention for, it's the code convention.
The code convention.
As opposed to the Geneva Convention.
Why?
And, and I know that Fran will, will proofread this on tomorrow.
Absolutely, tomorrow morning, on the way down to see the Twins.
Oh, my goodness, yes, that's great.
Tomorrow's Twins Day.
Now, the thing for, for you to keep an eye out is did I capture all of the term, the terms embedded in the text?
Capitalized?
Just the first letter capitalized. Um, and as it turns out, and I didn't know this, but Fran and I were agonizing on Sunday over finding an E, an E lowercase that was changed to an E uppercase. And with Wordfind and Google Find, that's, that's crazy. But Wordfind has a, an uppercase, a case sensitivity.
Ah.
And so I was able to find it that way. Um, I don't know that that will be at all helpful. I don't know whether or not Google has a case sensitivity.
I think it does, but I'll, I'll look for it and I'll let you know.
Well, you were the one that helped me with the word, case sensitivity.
Okay, so on this, we're on chapter nine, um, and everything up until section fourteen, which really is nine point fourteen. Um, looks like just the conventions you were talking about, as we get into the nepotism.
Right.
And we're waiting for John.
Yes, we're waiting for John now.
Which section is that?
Nine four, section fourteen.
Okay. John did respond, um, I, yesterday I pressed him on when he was going to respond. There are a couple of questions that, that are essential to some of the chapters, and then there are the chapters that he has to review. Yesterday, he said he had to get a letter out, and he would start working on my questions and the chapters today. Of course, that's what he said yesterday. Who knows? Who knows?
That's what he said.
So should we pass on nine until?
Until we get a response from John, but, because it looks as if, if I look through chapter nine, it looks as if the only comment is on nepotism. I don't see any other comment.
And I think A's all right, actually, because it's just the, whoever the relative is or officer is, they can, you know, appoint, hire, promote, or discipline, but that doesn't mean the rest of the board.
Right, yeah.
It is a good point, Fran. Uh, what is your name? Dave. It's only, it's only B.
So.
Right, the matter would be in front of the entire board, not just an individual creating nepotism.
Actually, this one, Dave, you're, you and Stephanie are at risk on that one.
What's that?
You and Stephanie are at risk on that one, on A.
Uh-huh, well, so George Costello and his wife?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and the other comments that I had made on fifteen, removing the word two, um.
I didn't see any other comments.
This was way back, three weeks ago.
When God was a kid.
Yeah, that was it. And adding, um.
A or B?
Uh, fifteen A, which was corrected. Uh, fif, and seventeen just added the seventy five.
We're not, she didn't take my name.
You're in section fifteen?
I'm in, I'm in section seventeen now.
I'm sorry, I.
Uh, Marie, in the section seventeen C, aggregate value of seventy five dollars, should there be a dollar sign in the parentheses? And should it, should it?
I've seen it done both ways.
Should the word dollar?
Whatever way you wanna do it, is fine with me.
Yeah, I wanna be consistent throughout, and I know we're never gonna.
Seventy five, seventy five, I don't think it needs a dollar.
So it could be seventy five dollars left per N, dollar sign seventy five, or, or seventy five, seventy five dollars.
Seventy five, seventy five dollars at the end.
Which is what, which is what they said.
Okay, so that's fine.
That's where, that's how it's most.
So we'll leave it for now. E code, we'll clean it up.
As it turns out, this was taken from the Department of State Model Code of Ethics, and so it is the way it is written there.
Department of State, no, I didn't say that.
So then in seventeen it goes A, B, C, and then one, two, three, there's one, two, three under C, or?
Is that a Jackson's five song?
The convention there, there's also a convention within the code for numbering and lettering.
So that just has to be intended.
So there's a chapter, and we're in nine, and then each section is nine dash one dash two dash three. Any topic within a section is given a capital letter A, and the next topic is given a capital letter B, the next topic is given a capital letter C. Any subtopic or subpoints under that topic is given a left paren, one, right paren, left paren, two, right paren. If there are any topics under that, they are given a left paren lowercase a, right paren, left paren lowercase b, right paren. If there are any subtopics under that, they are given a left paren Roman numeral one lowercase.
Gotcha.
So the question I had was, uh, should they be intended? Was it because I?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, if they're under C, then the only reason why I asked is because they were in the same line.
Yeah, the problem that I've had with this is that.
That's okay. I'm glad you're doing it.
Once and once and once of this, then we can call you back in and then.
For editing. Call us when it's our turn.
Thank you.
I have, I have avoided and ignored formatting.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not.
Looking at that same section, just a fast question on the E. E has a one and a two.
Good catch, Fran.
But there's nothing, I'm missing something there.
It should just be a one, I, yeah, sorry, it should just be an E, I believe, let me scroll down a bit. Oh, no.
There's a two.
The ones in the row, but.
No, it's just, that's be intended.
Yeah, but you, the one, but if there's no.
There's no subset.
Text associated with E.
Yeah. So it's just E.
And maybe it should be E, maybe two should become F, but that's a.
Uh, let me go back and, because it does change the, the meaning.
Right.
Okay, let me go back and look at, so this is, what's, this is nine dash seventeen?
It's, um, nineteen. Seventeen.
Seventeen, capital E.
E, yes.
And then a one and a two. Is there any text?
So in the sections that are parenthesized one, two, et cetera.
Yes.
Should the beginning of that sentence be capitalized? Cause I see under C, one, two, and three, none of those are capitalized, but.
Left paren one, left paren. Left paren one, left paren two, left paren three?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know what the problem is with one. It appears as if there, I don't know what the problem is with E. There appears to be a problem with E. I'll have to go back to the model code to see what I did wrong.
In terms of, in terms of, when you're asking the C, um, I think a lot of that goes with, as far as I know, when we've finished this whole thing and everything, then we're going to E code. As far as I know, when we finish this whole thing and everything, then we're going to E code. E code is gonna.
Oh, cool, okay.
So we're gonna let them do it.
So so C, as it turns out, C looks to my eye to be correct.
All right. Okay.
Because it it starts out with no municipal officer, blah, 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 colon, and then here are the three conditions, one, two, and three.
Gotcha.
Okay. E, however, has no text associated with it. It just goes into so um the left paren. So there's something wrong with E.
Okay, so that's, other than that, um, John, you're waiting for John on this anyway, right?
Yes, yes. Uh just on the one.
Right.
So what I'll do tomorrow, um hopefully I'll have time tomorrow, is I'll make the changes to the section numbers. I'll make the changes to the definitions to eliminate the quotes and make everything uppercase. And I'll try to figure out what's wrong with nine to seventeen, E, left paren one, left paren two.
Okay, so then we'll review nine at another time.
Yes, and and I'll make comments in the in the text. Actually, no, I'm going to uh I'm gonna go and accept the section numbers.
Right.
And I'll accept the definition names, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That works to me, okay.
Why don't you just finalize it? All of it is.
Well, we're waiting for John.
Oh, for John, I know.
For comments on the nepotism, so.
Well, I think we could just cut off less, there's no other options. Oh, boy. Yawn, yawn, yawn.
Don't yawn yet.
Alright.
Okay, so what are we doing, twenty-one next?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, just, it's got red.
Red and orange.
It's got fogbed stuff in it. Didn't that looks blue or something?
Yeah, what else?
We've lost her, we've been masculine.
Next, no more, sorry, can't do this.
Okay.
Personally.
Baby's a boy and you can't tell what they are. She's late and then we knew exactly, they're boys. So we wanna just accept.
Yes, let's start moving on this.
You're on twenty-one?
Uh, we'll be ready.
Seven dash two go.
Uh.
We're, okay.
Chapter twenty-one?
Twenty-one, change. Who's accepting? Dave, are you accepting?
Uh, you can accept.
Okay, change man with person. Our file needs to be saved as a doc, DLCX first, okay, did that.
We added the next one, so it's just an addition, so you can accept that.
Alternate planning board members, John added that.
And all the next ones you can accept, they're just changing because we added.
We delete a tab. In case four with five, we delete the tab, then we're gonna get screwed up.
Yeah.
Five with six, we're not deleting that tab. Six with seven. Seven with eight. Eight with nine. Eight with nine. And then.
Oh, this computer's driving me nuts, so slow.
I guess I screwed something up there.
So here, here you can see, right after the um uh the list of uh se- section names, you can see history, adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring on August second to nineteen sixty-five by resolution. That, we will have that in some of our chapters that are brand new.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I'm sorry, I was having a hard time getting this thing to open on my computer. Can you say that again?
Sure. Uh so if you go to chapter one, you go through the index, twenty-one point one, twenty, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
And then you see history.
Just in the word history?
The word history.
Oh, gotcha, okay, got it. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so in twenty-one one, I I'm going to assume without even checking that all the codes that Marie, uh that John is saying replace one seventy-nine F with seven, seven eighteen, that those are acceptable.
Yes.
So is that just good to accept?
Mm-hmm.
Uh delete footnote with text editor's note.
Oh, there was a um a a subscript, um and it was a a a note at the bottom. And he deleted it because it is no longer, i- if you scroll down to the bottom, editor's note, former uh chapter one seventy-nine.
F of the village.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so that can go out.
Okay, so that's, good, okay. Now, delete all terms to commence as of the date of this chapter. That can, that was not, yeah, that, I have quite a. Now, at the beginning of this twenty-one dash one, it says amended to twenty-eight seventy-nine, and then we're taking out something that that referred to something in nineteen seventy-nine. Is that?
Correct.
Okay to take that out, even though.
As as I read it, as I read through it, the members first appointed shall terms, shall serve terms of one, two, three, four, and five years as designated. And then it says all terms to commence as of the date of this chapter. That's already.
That's already happened.
It already happens.
But even though we're referring to nineteen seventy-nine, you might still take that out.
I I'm hoping that people, if they interpret it, that they interpret it as nineteen seventy-nine and not when this updated chapter is accepted or adopted.
All right, so we take that out then, take it out, all terms to commence.
Mm-hmm.
And space two terms.
I don't know why the shall serve terms of one, okay.
Where are you, Marie?
Um if I look at the second, the third sentence.
The shall serve terms of one. Right, because you wanted them all to um to end at different times. You don't you don't want everyone's terms to expire at the same time, so at that point.
Right, but what's, there's an underline of purple from the middle of the word shall. It is in sen- sentence two.
See, I don't have that.
The members first appointed shall serve terms of one.
I don't have that. Oh, boy.
The members first appointed shall serve terms of one, two, three, four, five.
I don't see, I don't have that. I have, uh, it gets, it gets from there on thereafter, that becomes, that's all an addition. You added thereafter, like from here on, from thereafter to the end was something that you added.
Right, but this this seems to be the.
Yeah, I don't have that, okay. I'm sorry, that doesn't show like that. I'll see, mine it shows as.
Mine shows a highlighted red.
Your one's blue, but that's beside the point. Okay, now.
Hmm, I'm not showing anything highlighted.
Okay, now, I believe.
Are you on the chapter?
You know what I think that is, Marie? Cause I'm just looking at it. It looks like it's sort of starting here and ending there. Starting with thereafter and ending.
Oh, okay, one, two, complete the unexpired. How do we get rid of it?
I think, oh, I think it's it's showing from thereafter to each member, that's like coming down. It's almost like a, like highlighting this point.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, although it's not as clear on yours. Mine was blue and now it is there. See, that's, that was the addition you did, and so that's, it was sort of showing that.
So should that be accepted?
Thereafter, the members of the planning board shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval of Board of Trustees for five-year terms.
Should it be of? Of each member?
Yeah.
Where are you?
The last sentence, the last last line says, or each member should be of.
Oh, to complete the unexpired, uh of each member. Good eyes, Steve.
Okay, I can go now.
A lower case N.
Yeah, lower.
So we're accepting that whole thereafter.
Yeah.
The term of each member first taken off, which will come from the year, and each member shall serve until the point of this session. And the should make an searchers during the term, and the mayor should make an interim appointment subject to the approval of the Board of Trustees.
How many were added?
He's okay, so this is all.
That's what's coming.
Go for it.
Okay, fine.
Next one is chair per, chair man becomes chairperson.
Yeah.
I wanna know when we get the the pizza and beer, even though I don't drink pi- beer. I don't drink pizza.
No, you shouldn't.
Yeah, okay.
So, and the village board becomes the Board of Trustees?
Of the Village of Cold Spring.
Right.
Man becomes.
And then chairperson again.
Okay, replace, okay, here's what, um.
And then where it said of the said board, we change that to of the planning board?
Board of Trustees reserves the right to appoint the chairperson of the planning board. That's good, so. See, that's good.
Yeah.
And the chairperson. So just designate this hereby appointed for the term of one year from the date thereof. Okay, wait a minute, my, did I jump?
Okay, so this is the point part where I I think that the mayor should be able to appoint with the approval of the board. And the reason being is the mayor's the one that is working with these people, and they're people that should be in this administration, so.
Um is there a, uh, all right, the Board of Trustees reserves the right to appoint the chairperson.
Yeah.
I don't mind it saying the mayor with the approval of the board, uh.
Yeah, that's the way it is. I can't just appoint them.
I mean, originally when I looked at.
It doesn't have the mayor in there at all.
No, because to me, the board is all of us, including the mayor.
But the mayor should be able to appoint some, or he should be able to make the, you know, not appoint, should recommend, make direct.
Reserves the right to appoint the chairperson and the chairperson.
Well, they appoint with the approval of the board.
Appoint it by the Board of Trustees, right?
Yeah, because it reads that way for the alternate. Why wouldn't it read that way for the permanent?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, mhm. Now, that that that's a John.
Director.
That totally makes sense to me.
The mayor and Board of Trustees?
The mayor, no, the mayor's subject to the approval by the Vo- Board of Trustees, the same way that it says for alternate.
Yeah.
Right.
Do we wanna reword it that way?
What's that?
Do we wanna reword it?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Make it the same.
All right, you good?
Turn around. We left. I can't see anybody over there.
Okay. All right, so what are we doing? We're changing, we're not changing.
What's that?
We're changing, we're not changing.
Thereafter. Four people that are finally changing.
The mayor and the Board of Trustees.
No.
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 The mayor with the approval.
Subject to approval by the Chair of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring.
Subject to.
Yes. All right, so so the mayor. Oops, I forgot to put it in the right place. It really helps. Now, do we want the, do you want an alternate said the mayor subject to approval may appoint an alternate?
No. What's that?
The twenty-one three says the mayor subject to approval by the village board may appoint an alternate planning board. Now, this says reserves the right to appoint. I don't think you reserve the right to appoint.
Where's reserve the right?
In twenty-one two. It says the Board of Trustees reserves the right to appoint the chair, why why is it reserves the right?
I don't see it, reserves the right.
Um, first sentence in twenty-one two.
Yeah, I don't know why it says that.
It says the Board of Trust, it currently says the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring reserves the right to appoint the chairperson.
Yeah, it should remove, reserves the right.
First line.
Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't make sense to me. It's not reserves the right. You're either gonna do it or you're not gonna do it.
Right.
Why is it the mayor board?
No, because I didn't finish also, I didn't finish, I didn't finish anything, because I got stuck halfway through and trying to figure.
Oh, okay.
Because if you include reserve, then you'd have to put who's actually doing it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's it's the chairperson, the chairperson of the boards, whether it's planning, HGB, is basically
It's the language.
appointed by the mayor and approved by the board.
Right.
In all cases, so.
So the mayor.
Yeah, reserves the right, then you.
It's to this.
Just the points. May.
No.
No, shall.
Shall sounds.
Put a comma after the Village of Cold Spring. You've got that parenther.
Comma, right. Shall appoint the chair, okay, the mayor subject to approval by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring.
Eliminate your space there.
Where is it?
After Cold Spring, you've got a space.
Gotcha.
Comment the space.
Okay. Shall appoint the chairperson and the chairperson so designated is hereby appointed for the term of one year from the date thereof. Okay, is that read okay? Mayor subject to approval by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring.
Yeah. Chair.
Shall point the chairperson of the planning board and the chairperson so designated, subject to approval for a term of one year.
Yeah, that's okay.
No, that's not happening, sorry. Sorry, I should.
Oh, sorry. All those things. They read well.
Well, once again, in the second sec- uh sentence, we need to add the mayor again in there, right?
Yeah, no, cause then it keeps going on there, right? You would have to.
Thereafter. The mayor and board.
Yes, yes, you'll have to add the mayor in there.
Yeah.
It should be the same as the first sentence.
As the first sentence, yeah, I was thinking that too. So just, just, just an offhand question, does this apply to the chair persons of all the other boards as well?
No, there's only question.
Just this one?
Just waiting. So they're the only ones that can nominate for one in there, approve temporarily.
Oops. Okay, does that read, the second sentence thereafter, the mayor subject to the approval of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring, shall annually appoint the chair, we sang annually, right? We added annually.
Yeah, because we did that at the re- reorganization meeting.
Yeah. But unless and until such subsequent, okay, if the planning board has not been appointed by the Board of Trustees, the planning board may nominate.
Put the mayor in there again?
No.
No.
Cause it's considering the whole board that time, I see.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take out button less and I'll let you guess.
Got space above there too. Ifa.
Ifa, isn't that right, ifa? If the planning board chairperson has not been appointed by the.
How would that happen?
We didn't get to it.
Somebody was out of town or something.
We we didn't want to, we, nobody we wanted to.
Or no one signed up, more likely.
We may nominate them up from the two members in acting.
Could you decide?
The acting chairperson designated, may also serve as chairperson, the event appointed chairperson's unable to participate because of conflict of interest. Wasn't there something else in there about conflict of interest?
Um it it, uh, conflict is interest is in the alternate.
Yeah, that's on the front.
Okay, so the acting chairperson designated. Do we wanna add in?
Got an extra period there. The date thereof has, it's one period, right?
I lost you.
On the top, hereby appointed for the term of one year, from the date thereof, period, period. On the top, hereby appointed for the term of one year, from the date thereof, period, period.
Ah.
There's just an extra period there, obviously.
Um, in the, the last sentence of twenty-one-two, the acting chairperson designated by the planning board may also serve as chairperson, the event, the appointed chairperson is unable to participate because of conflict of interest. Do we also wanna add, that says in the next para- paragraph?
Or illness or vacation.
Or illness or vacation?
That makes sense to me.
Does that, does it also need to?
What's that?
The last sentence of twenty-one-two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, should we add or illness or vacation, the way it reads in twenty-one-three?
Yeah.
I, I agree that no, the chairperson will typically schedule the meeting such that the chairperson could, uh, uh, attend.
No. Okay.
The alternate person steps in when one of the members cannot participate because of.
Okay, just give food down there.
Conflict or vacation or illness.
Yeah.
Right, so we're good.
Well, it's under. What time is the real start?
It started at six.
I would say, good.
There's still their.
Alternate planning board members.
Does Jeff there as well? He's a Jeff with the bottle.
He used to have good stuff in there, he'd write good stuff.
Are you not diet?
Pursuant to seven seventeen eighteen sixteen, the mayor. Do we need to, I, I know John is referring to seven seventeen eighteen, all these things.
Ooh, boy.
Do we need to reference that as to where seven seventeen eighteen dot sixteen is? Is, I assume it's a New York state rule, what?
What are you, what are you talking about?
Uh, twenty-one-three, excuse me.
Twenty-one-three.
First line, pursuant to seven seventeen eighteen point one-six.
Right.
Um, is it New York state law? So I assume it's.
It might be twenty-one point one, twenty-one dash one, pursuant to the perceptions of seven dash seven eighteen, a village law of the state.
Thank you, okay.
Talks about.
Got you.
So I, I think that, I think that's, oh, quite well.
So we don't need to do it again. Yeah. Subject to approval, um, the mayor, may, okay, so the rest of twenty-one-three is good?
Mm-hmm.
Love it.
Mm-hmm, we're good. We're good on this side. Check team B over here.
Were you added or illness or vacation for the alternate?
Yes, yes, there was a, um, a, um, a bulletin that came out from the, what was it when I sent it to you? Uh, you had, um.
Oh, yeah, that was, I just don't remember off the top of my head where it came from.
Uh. It wasn't like, um, it was, um.
Nicer though, no, uh.
No, it wasn't nicer. It was another planning type.
Yeah.
Organization, and they went through why you would have an, an alternate member. And the reasons that they identified were conflict of interest, illness or vacation. That's why I added it in there, because it seemed to me that conflict of interest is not the only thing we have to worry about.
Okay, the rest of the term should be for five years, is fine. Formatting is fine. I'm gonna replace one seventy-nine K with seven seven twenty-eight, that's a John. This is similar to what we did up above, right, delete the footnote.
Yeah.
The planning, delete said. Delete hereby. And my screen jobs. Okay, John says delete three. Oh, okay, and then delete that footnote.
That's another footnote.
Yep. Subject however to the requirement that before any such plan ever is approved, does approve planning board should refer to proposal decision to the village one oh nine. Okay, this is where John had a question. It looks like the village board has final say. If this is what they want, then planning board is just an advisory role. I recommend eliminate, that would be, that's part that John, um, crossed out, I guess. So in other words, we don't have to have final say over what the planning board did when they approved our practice, since I wouldn't even know what that one's working at.
Yeah.
You guys might, but I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I'm good with John's suggestion.
That's what they're for, those guys.
Yeah, they pay the big bucks.
That's right. Get all the recognition.
Do, do not delete the amended two twenty-seven oh one.
Where am I?
Do I?
Where, okay, wait, what am I, in line for a second, I, all right, so leave that in there until you can.
No, it's, it's, it's not clear what.
Oh, okay. So you don't wanna.
What two twenty-seven oh one did, but if it is something, anything other than the phrase subject however to blah 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 blah, that's gotta stay in there.
Right. So I'm going to reject John's and then redo it, is that good?
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, so we wanna take out.
Subject.
From here. Yep.
Sure, we are, reject. Actually, the amended part?
Yes, I think I'm doing this the wrong way, so everybody don't.
It's working.
It's working.
It's disappearing.
Yeah.
I put a period at the end of the sentence.
Dork.
Period. Thank you.
Okay.
Why is the oh one highlighted?
And then John's comment, I'm just gonna click resolve.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Throw his comments in the garbage.
For five.
Probably cost two hundred bucks.
We paid him, uh, we paid him a lot of money for that comment. Replace said with the.
Man if he's doing the whole thing.
Fourth with.
Planning wood.
That's a good one. Could do a whole semester on that.
Yeah.
Professional.
They have been filed in the office of the county department prior to the appointment.
Really go ask her to.
Four. One fourth of.
Where are we, Fran?
We're in twenty-one-five.
Okay, I think we can accept that, right, replacing such.
Accept that one, yes.
I think we can accept the next.
Um, and the said clerk, village clerk is okay?
Mm-hmm.
Let's hereby request it too.
Mm-hmm.
I request the county, okay, wait a minute.
Request the right to the county clerk on the county, request the county clerk pursuant.
Request the county clerk. Right to the county. Okay.
Goodbye, his and hers, good.
Love it.
Six. The, the planning board of the village of Cold Spring shall undertake its duties.
Trust in John.
Six to seven. Did they rewrite the whole code? Because all the numbers are not what they were a hundred and ten years ago when this was written. Planning board. It makes suitable and probable recommendation to the board of trustees of the village of Cold Spring and. Submente. Replace B with B. Hmm, let's take a look at the village's call, okay, let's have a look. So there's a lot to read.
I don't know what she thought.
I don't remember which is. And. Do we get everything?
Mm-hmm. Terrific. Super.
So in thirty-two, oh, I mean, like the law thirty-two dash twelve.
What's that?
In thirty-two, in chapter thirty-two.
Yeah.
If you look at the index, thirty-two dash twelve, right underneath that, there's an O, an uppercase O, that shouldn't be there.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
I'm going to move this to the other folder, this one we just did, I'll copy it and move it to the other folder.
Little Fran folder?
Yeah, I gotta rename the Fran folder. When I figure out how to rename it, I will rename it.
Randy folder. Didn't look much older.
I know.
Than I called her.
I missed that. Okay, I'm going to.
Isn't that the scolder?
I'm not touching.
She's getting a little balder.
All right, make a copy. No, it's, yeah, make a copy.
Was there anything, wait, did we look in the warrants folder?
Yeah.
Yeah, was there anything in there? Do you remember? I don't remember any.
I think there was.
Well, we looked at it and then got edited and then Marie got it back and then she.
Was there anything?
I think there was, I think there was a question to John's.
Did some changes? In alarm?
Yeah.
Turn around. Okay, so that's.
Alarm permit law. Sounds pretty serious.
This is the one, um, you look at it, please. Do we hit this? Every time I hit it's open, I gotta go back in.
So Jeff's not even attempting to print this stuff up for the meetings anymore.
No, because he doesn't have a good.
It's not worth the effort, I don't think, it's already here, so.
Copy of.
I think there was the EMS, Phillips Town, the definitions, we wanted to change that.
Yeah, I did have some thirty-two in here from four.
We did, emergency medical.
Emergency medical.
It's kind of EMS. That'd be the only place it's spelled out, is it spelled out before or not? In the, uh, where are they called up? The preamble.
preamble.
I have free ramble. You know, finally, it's love. Okay, I hit, I hit thirty-two as marked as.
EMS.
Where is it?
Inductress.
Appropriate.
The chapter of the, oh, chapter.
No, no, there was no, it's okay.
Chapter, yeah, chapter thirty-two that I'm looking at hasn't got any comments.
Right.
Oh, boy.
But I thought we had, uh, sent something to John on that.
Correct, warrant EMS, yeah.
But, uh, it's not on thirty, it's not thirty-two.
So the, and the definitions, the EMS, I don't think we should have Phillips Towns, because we have others, it should be just emergency medical service with general.
Okay, so where are we? Purpose.
Thirty-two, three.
Phillips on voluntary ambulance, yeah, um, it doesn't have to necessarily be a voluntary ambulance call, right? EMS should just say emergency medical services.
What's that?
Yeah.
Just define it as emergency medical service.
Yeah.
And, and don't give an example. Cause that could change, right?
Yeah, right now I think that there's another one that can come, but Phillips Town's not there, the other.
Yeah, it's, um, M star, right?
Yeah.
A something.
M stars in there, with them, so.
Right. That's really up to them, not us, right?
So do we wanna just delete this and?
I would put emergency medical service because usually you need it, like up above it mentions that if there's an alarm that goes to them.
Yeah, it's mentioned in two different paragraphs.
Yeah, it's mentioned down here too.
I think you're right, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're.
Get that one. Check plus.
Why, why?
Lyle's picking up.
I mean, let me just go back.
Good job.
Good job, Dave.
Clap.
One more one.
Lost a page.
Deleted the whole thing.
Want me to jump in there and do it?
Um.
Deleted the whole thing.
Yeah.
Oh, shit.
Started doing something and then I lost it.
Is it services or service?
Yes.
No, I should be in.
Yeah, I think it's just service.
We're gonna eat again the potato.
Potato, there is one, uh, what's his name spelled?
Or plural. Dan Quayle.
Yeah, Quayle. He just had the old spelling of it for, for olden times.
Yeah. When they wanted to use as many vowels as they could in a word.
All these therefore's without an E at the end drive me nuts.
Yeah, extremely distracting.
What's that? What's that?
All through this document there, there, there's the word therefore.
Without an E.
Without an E.
It's a legal term.
Therefore.
Uh, yeah, I know, but.
That's kind of key, I see.
As it turns out, the only reference to EMS is in the definitions.
Is what?
It's the only.
Now there's another one.
I was too above it too.
I'm sorry?
There's a, another one.
False emergency alarm.
False emergency alarm.
So, listen to what I just said, the only reference to EMS is in the definitions, so under.
In the definitions.
Yes.
In the definitions.
Yes, when you said definition.
More than one.
No, no, sorry, so.
We put.
Heard that R S.
So, um, alarm devices, alarm installation, uh, false emergency alarm, those are the three places in the document where the phrase EMS is, um, is referenced.
And I think it's much better with emergency medical service, uh, I should.
Therefore.
So, does that mean that it should be spelled out in each, where it shows up?
No, it's just, just that, it's, yeah.
No. Okay.
It's gonna be a, I don't know, coding night, I think.
Ooh, that's not good.
I'm kidding, I can't take coding, actually, I don't learn to do it, but my back's just stiffening up.
I have some to leave, do you want some?
No, thanks.
Or can I sit just towards your chair?
Oh, I know, the chair drives me nuts.
I'm gonna smile.
Just try and explain to everyone why I'm cremising.
All right, I don't.
I have like one shoulder blade right now instead of two.
I see that.
Kind of stuck together.
John, I gotta go with.
Yeah, his chair's making.
Yeah, his chair's making wanna hunch.
Yeah.
His chair's a lot to be designed.
There's gotta be a better one. Getting better though.
Which one do you, be of the office chair?
I have, I have.
I like these ones in the, uh.
This isn't bad, it's just leaning forward like my elbows.
You know, it's just cause my legs are not under, under a desk, so.
Yeah, that's why I didn't do.
So I'm kinda.
Bring the other one over and put them up.
That's okay. That's all right.
Kick back.
No, it's better that I just remind myself to sit up straight, so.
Fifteen minutes ago.
Okay, so, are we good with this one now? Or where are we?
I don't see anything else.
Maybe.
Yeah.
So I'm looking through my notes, I don't see anything else.
Times by myself.
Okay, so we have, so this one's good too?
Mm-hmm.
Dogs, we did dogs last one.
Okay, we're gonna try to get through dogs and then that's it.
Didn't we do dogs last time?
Yeah, but there was the thing with the, there's a couple leashes or harboring, remember we were here?
We changed the harboring.
The harboring.
We changed harboring.
Oh, I just thought we accepted that.
Yeah, but then it was like, and I looked at it and I'm like, in possession of just doesn't fall right with me.
No.
Like, like in possession of means like.
You have possession of.
Yeah, but like, to me, that's like you're holding.
Owns, owns and in possession of are almost synonyms.
I didn't see that.
Cause you can be in possession of anything that you don't own.
Yeah, a person could be watching.
Yeah, but if you're in possession of a dog, I mean if.
You're responsible for the dog if you have it in your.
In possession of doesn't mean responsible.
Maybe you should be any person responsible.
That's what we're saying, person owning or in possession of in the village shall be a violation.
But harboring includes that.
In possession of.
Yes.
I, I just don't think that's clear.
But dogs don't float. So why would you put them in a harbor? I know.
Do you go? The coding.
I don't think it sounds right either.
No.
I don't like, harboring to me is like, you know, harboring a fugitive, like you're sheltering them.
It's like you secretly have it.
You're sheltering and.
But in possession of to me means you actually, almost like you have it in your hands.
It's yours.
It doesn't necessarily mean that it's yours.
Yeah, but also, in possession of also means like, let's say you're dog sitting for somebody.
Yeah, see, that's.
Right.
You know, you're still in possession of the dog, you're not in possession.
No, 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 you're not in possession.
You're in.
You're dog sitting, you're not in possession of.
I mean, I don't.
I would.
If your dog's sitting and taking some, taking someone else's dog out for a walk.
That would be harboring.
If you're, if you're dog sitting and you're under contract with someone to be responsible for this dog while they're not.
No, you're possessed. Why not?
Responsible is different than possessing.
Yeah. I think responsible, I'd rather.
All right, well.
But I don't think, I'm not sure, I don't.
Well, why don't we say that, or responsible for.
Oh, then we get into.
Any dogs. Owning or in responsibility.
Owning or responsible.
Possibly, or responsible for.
Um.
Instead of possession. Because, because if you're walking someone's dog and they get loose and it was in your possession, that's your fault, right?
Harboring means give a home or shelter.
Harboring is not.
Yeah, see.
But walking, you're not harboring.
Give a home or shelter, yeah, you're not, when you're walking them, you're not.
There aren't people in this town that do dog walking.
Yes, yes.
So then it's, that dogs are responsible.
So they're, they're responsible for.
They're responsible for.
What about in control, oh, no, that doesn't work.
You know, if you're in control, then you wouldn't.
You wouldn't get this.
Wouldn't have this problem.
Right.
Yeah, if you're.
You wouldn't be getting the ticket, right.
Oh, what section are we looking at on the way?
Responsible for.
Forty five.
No, I know that, which.
Forty five dash three.
Dash three A.
Dash three A, okay.
Is that the first appearance of?
Oh, or, yeah.
Possession.
Any person who you are.
Well, I, I'd go for responsible. And, owning or responsible for.
Mm, or.
Any dogs.
Owning, comma, in possession of, comma, responsible for.
That's my suggestion. Okay, you can add, have all three.
Is that too much?
Got it all covered, let it.
You can see.
And harbor too.
Oh, they have to have owning, you can have a person responsible for the dog.
Any person responsible for any dog in the village.
Shall be in violation if such dog whether or not obtained a license or rented large.
Regardless of ownership. Because that's true, it is regardless of ownership.
Why, why don't, how about if we just say the owner of any dog that runs a lodge, blah, 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 blah? Is it violation of this, you know, whether or not you're the one walking the dog, you're the owner, so the owner can fight with it.
Well, you don't own it though.
The owner can fight with the dog, with the dog walker, but the owner is the person who should be responsible, or have somebody responsible to walk the dog.
I think you need a second term there, owner or responsible individual or, or.
No.
Responsible.
First off.
Not responsible.
Yeah, not responsible, cause it's.
Yeah.
Michael, what would you say?
Yeah, what do you think?
Help.
I agree with that after the mayor says.
Oh, Michael, Michael, Michael.
Michael.
Well, not yet.
Consider your appointment.
Damn.
Any person have any dog.
You know what, I'm gonna do a funny little thing here.
Good word.
Go to.
Good word and do it.
Synonym.
Sarus.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Or if we put them up, owner also or responsible person, like define that in the beginning of it, so that we don't have to, shall be called owner.
No, no.
Come on.
Responsible is not the same as owner.
No, I know, but if we describe what we're defining as the person who's getting the ticket, basically. If there's a problem with the dog, whether you own it or not, if you're.
So owner is, is defined, right?
I think so.
Yes, it is, in the definitions, owner is defined.
Oh, there it is.
And it says the party purchasing the license, if the dog is licensed, if it's not licensed, the owner shall just, the term owner shall designate and cover. Any person or persons from association or corporation, who or which at any time owns or has custody or control of harbors or is, or is otherwise responsible for any animal which is kept, brought, or comes within the village.
That person shall be.
Any person owning or harboring a dog, for a period of one week, prior to the filing of any accusatory instrument, charging a violation of this chapter, shall be held and deemed to be the owner of such dog for the purpose of this chapter. In the event any dog found to be in violation of this chapter, shall be owned by a minor, and then it describes the responsibility.
Right.
And the term ownership will be associated with any person or persons.
So should we just say owner and just be done?
From, so, so, who or which.
Actually.
If you're gonna do that, you have to capitalize it.
It, I mean, it should be.
I don't know, yeah.
So you only have to have harboring or responsible for or anything.
Yeah, because, because that definition pretty much covers everything.
Then just say owner.
The owner of any dogs, that, why don't we just say, instead of any person owner or in possession, the owner of any dogs in the village, and capitalize it and then refer back to this, which pretty much covers.
Yeah, see definition above.
That, you know, the, here's a, um, a quandary I had, the term owner is defined, the term owning is not defined. And I chose consciously not to capitalize owning, and only to capitalize owner.
Right, so why don't we rephrase it to say?
Like, any owner?
Any owner of, the owner of any dogs in the village shall be in violation, and then capitalize it.
Capital O.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And it's all.
Instead of any person owning or in possession, just.
You don't have to describe any.
Take the owner.
But then, on, in the.
Harboring's in the definition.
In the definition, you have, uh, anyone owning or harboring a dog for a period of one week prior to the violation.
Yes.
It can't be for the day though, if you're a dog walker, or you're house-sitting, or whatever, yeah. So you can get the, the length of time out of there.
Why would you wanna do that?
Because then we'll have to.
You're never gonna.
If someone has a dog for the day, and they're walking it, then they're not.
Walking it or something.
Or you have a friend visiting, yeah. They only have it for fifteen minutes and it runs away, and it poops all over Elliot's lawn.
Ultimately, it's still the owner's responsibility, right?
What's that?
Ultimately, though, it's, the responsibility falls on the owner.
The owner.
Not the person who might happen to be walking the dog that day.
Talking about any person owning a harboring for one week.
Yeah, why do we need one week?
Yeah.
Accusatory instrument.
You're never gonna be able to prove that, if somebody goes, I.
Yep, I just got this dog today, so, so, not, not my fault.
No, please, since the term owner shall designate and cover any person or persons from owner, who or which at any time owns or has custody of, control of harbors or is otherwise responsible for an animal which is kept, brought, or comes in, any person, uh, charged, shall be held and deemed to be the owner of such dog.
Why don't we, uh, do you wanna highlight, just hold on that one and we'll, we'll reword that and move on, move along here?
Yeah, just highlight it. Question it, put question marks or something.
Cause I think like what Steve said before, maybe if you refer back to what an owner is and include any person that's watching the dog, or whatever you wanna, however you wanna phrase it.
Walking or sitting.
Sitting or whatever.
There's not too many things that you have to cover there, that you can do.
The way that it's.
You can, your dog sit, you can dog walk, you own the dog. Yeah.
So, that's our whole, thank you, yeah, it's on forty five dash two.
I thought.
Capital O.
Yeah, forty five, for whatever reason, the word owner is not capitalized in a lot of places.
Yeah, it's in quotes, well deemed owner.
I, I don't know that, I, um, and I thought I had, I thought I had capitalized.
That's in the definition.
But it doesn't have the.
All the Os, owner.
But it doesn't describe what an owner is, or does it?
No, 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 no.
It's owner, but then when it, then it's in, when it's in quotes like that, are they referring, shouldn't it just be capital O instead of quotes?
Where do you mean in quotes, I'm not sure.
Well, if it's, owner has the definition, then it had owner in quotes within the definition.
The term owner, it's, that's.
Shouldn't that just be capitalized?
No, no, it's saying the term.
No, then that.
Owner, O W N E R. Not, it, it, you have to differentiate between.
Capital O and.
No, 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 I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to say this.
All right, take your time.
It's in the definition anyway, I don't think it's anywhere else, or it shouldn't be anywhere.
I'm worried about the one week, that may be a legal requirement, so I would not delete one week.
Yeah, just highlight it.
I would, I don't think, I don't, why would we have one week?
I had.
Say one hour.
John, who has reviewed this and said.
Well, he didn't make a comment on that, he could've missed that.
Well, we could, we could ask him.
Not John.
Ask him if it's illegal.
If not, if he review it, that's why are we reviewing him, I mean, accept everything, he'd look through it.
I, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, by the way, I don't know why.
I just, it doesn't make any sense to me, for a period of one week, a person owning it, I mean, if somebody gets a ticket, what are they gonna say?
It's just.
That's a loophole, man.
I'm gonna say I didn't, if I wanted to.
I don't own that dog.
Yeah, that just seems like it's opening the door to all kinds of like, yeah, I'm not responsible.
If they bother to read it.
The only, the only thing is, only in my head, I'm gonna, can't get it worded, um, in the absence of an owner, then any person owning or harboring a dog for a period of one week shall be deemed to be the owner. So like, you go on vacation and you, you dump your dog on Sunday.
About one week or less, throw that in there.
I, I really, I would like to get John's.
Let's ask John, I mean, it's, you know.
Okay, well, yeah, let's just ask John specifically about that one.
I disagree with him either. I mean, somebody could be, somebody could call up today and ask Joe, whatever her name is, to walk the dog, and she can be walking the dog and take the loose,
Go mango.
and then she's not gonna be responsible for it, cause it's not a week?
Yep, she, she only had it for fifteen minutes.
Okay, let's go to five, uh, forty five, three.
So we're gonna, well, that's, we.
We're gonna just go back.
Until we determine.
Right, then we do.
The definition, let's leave that one sort of hanging.
Make a capital, greater.
Okay.
Or whatever. There it is again.
Yeah, that should be capitalized in six.
Which one, which one?
In six.
Six. Forty five, three, parentheses, A six.
Forty five, three, six.
Capital owner.
You got it, Lynn?
Yeah.
I'll show you your name come up.
I didn't mean to like, the, the mouse pad is like either really sensitive or not sensitive at all. So it kinda jumps back and forth, so sometimes I'll accidentally touch it.
Immediately. Ding, 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 I'm just stretching. We're, we're almost there.
Almost.
Forty five, five, the fact that a dog is a lodge in the village, in any place other than the premise of the, shall be presumed there if the dog has been permitted to be at large with the knowledge of the owner or person having, this was concerned with the phrasing here, especially committed against John, okay. So this is, this is another.
This one has already gone to John as a question.
Okay, so we have to wait on that one.
Oh, you seem like a comment there.
Yes, I do, so it's just for you, so that's it, because the rest of it.
You just say, I just got this dog.
Is that good?
We have to wait for John's.
Okay.
Yeah, I wish we had this. Has this changed significantly?
This?
Oh, yeah, this particular chapter?
No, not at all.
Just go.
I wish I had known this, cause.
Written better, that's all.
There was a, we had an incident with our dog, where I was walking our dog on a leash, and some neighbors were walking their dogs.
Not on a leash.
Not on a leash.
All right, all right.
And they said, oh, yeah, they're friendly, and then completely attacked Bill, bit him in the mouth, he almost died from infection.
Wow.
And then she wouldn't, you know, it was shortly after we moved to cold spray, actually.
Welcome to cold.
And, uh, I didn't know that any of this was on the books.
That's a wrap?
So what we have, what we have approved is five, um, twenty one and thirty two, is that correct? And nine, we're waiting for, are we waiting for something for nine, from John?
Marie was gonna make the, uh, changes, I think, on that one.
Okay, so nine, we have to wait for, so other than that, um.
You did five, thirty two.
Five is okay, twenty one is okay, and thirty two is okay, nine and forty five we're waiting.
Nine and forty.
That's what I thought.
That's, that's right.
Waiting for John.
Marie, as far as, as far as what we discussed the other day, we still have to hold on some chapters that John hasn't finished with, and I do have a list, I hope someplace you gave it to me.
I'm sorry, Brian, can you say it again?
I'm sorry, um, you told me the other day the chapters that have not been finished with John, okay?
Okay, okay, John, yes.
Forty, fifty two.
If, if, I'm just getting my list out.
Okay, I have a.
Forty, forty, fifty two.
One eleven?
Uh, actually, um. Noise, I've got a question for him on noise, um. One oh eight, we're waiting for Tom Costello, one eleven, we're waiting for John, one twenty two, we're waiting for John. Actually, uh, Jen just finished with it, and so the, um, she has questions of John, one twenty six, oh no, so, one twenty six is what we're waiting on, on Tom Costello, one oh eight is ready to go, one twenty seven, we're waiting on, on John, and one thirty four, we're waiting on John, is that the list that you have?
That's the list I have. So those are the ones we shouldn't bother.
Yes, do not bother with that.
So we have done.
Do you want to adjourn?
No.
No.
No, we need to identify what the, what the topics are for the next meeting.
The next one's in order, we're just going in order.
In order by the ones you gave us last night.
The one.
By the way, they're on the document.
Phase, yeah, phase five, post-phase five.
So, by numerical order, is what you meant?
The ones that you had, no, you had whatever they were in order.
The ones. Okay, what were they?
The way we did tonight wasn't in numerical order, was it?
No, it was the ones, it was the, well, it was, but it was the ones Marie had given us.
But it was also numerical order.
Okay, so after that, we have forty-seven.
Check, checks returned.
Forty-eight, fifty.